We have the other one that we're gonna put on, we might have to make some changes. It's a warrant on temporary moratorium on the construction of large-scale solar photovoltaic energy systems. And have a motion to...
You got that motion?
Second. Any discussion on it?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we'll close the warrant.
Okay, so... Oh, these were my copies.
Both are your copies.
Okay, my copy, sorry.
Yes, she gave you... You gave Clarence a copy, didn't you?
I didn't give him a copy of the solar mine. We brought one on the side. I was worried about you guys were waiting.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
You can just copy down. So you went through all of those and then back there, right?
Yeah. Winston saw it, so I'd like to make a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, so now what are these two?
Well, don't we also need to go over the other warrants to see if we got a place for them?
Yes, we're gonna go over them. We have to... We just reopened it to put those articles. Now we have to close the warrant and then we'll go in over the articles. We're gonna review the meetings, the articles that are gonna go onto the town meeting.
Okay, so now...
Oh, I see. Okay, 'cause we have to open it to accept those and then close it and then review.
We have to open and close it to accept the ones that just came in late. And then now we're gonna go through and we're gonna review the ones that are gonna be on the warrant.
Right, so now I have two with streetlights.
Oh, yeah, we did that one already.
Okay, so it's in?
Yep, that one's in.
All right. And then this was the parking van?
Oh, I didn't see that. Oh, the parking van, oh, I didn't see.
The other one, it probably confused because they're both look the same to the bylaw.
Oh, I don't have that.
Okay, so here it is.
Okay. Okay, yeah, this is the one...
Okay, now I feel better.
Okay, on the parking bylaw. And there's another one. Do we want to...
Oops. All right, so now...
This has what... The difference with this one is, 'cause we already have this in already, this has to have the cost of the vehicle, have removal and storage charges, if any, shall be paid by the vehicle owners or owners to the person. This is what the bylaw committee wants to add on to that.
Okay.
And I'm...
They wanna be able to tow... They wanna be able to tow.
They want to tow them right from the scene once it's their ticket.
Mike said that the current bylaws don't allow the police department to tow vehicles.
Right, and there is a bad actor, and I understand why he's doing it.
Okay, so you want to put... Do we want... Yeah, and see, then we talked to town council on it, and she said it's a pretty common bylaw. So do we want to vote to put this on?
Yes, yes.
Is a motion... Okay, can I move?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right, so now I...
Now, there's also another one. Do you have it?
I'm looking at another package of stuff that was handed to me, and I'm just...
We had the one to... It's another citizen's petition also, I know, is about trash.
Yes, yeah, I know about that.
Who's that one?
That's probably in with the big stack package that we have, that you're gonna review.
So...
'Cause they made it in during the open period.
Right.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's why it's in there, okay.
So, okay, so, okay, I... Wait a second.
Now, are they all in?
The paper clip didn't work.
Okay, that's what...
All right, so now I'm feeling better now. All right, so let's start at the top.
So we're all set.
So we're gonna close...
We're going to close... You know, we're gonna close the warrant for the annual town meeting. I'd like a motion for that.
You have that motion?
Second.
And then I would... Now, we're gonna move on to 10, and we're gonna review the articles for the annual town meeting.
And that's in that big package there.
That's in our big package, right here.
Right, I got it.
Okay. All right, now, Article 1, that goes on every year. And 2...
Yep, 3, 4, 5, right?
And 3, 4, 5...
7, 8, 9, 10.
And 7, 9, 10. Did you happen to ask Mike about that other one?
What one?
Oh, it's not on here.
Which one? Oh, he told me to take it off.
Oh, to take it off?
He said, you know, you just do that once, you don't do it every year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why it's up.
And do we want to include 10 in the box?
I asked Mike then, he said no. Mike said, no, leave it out like that.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion to place Article 1 through 9 on the town meeting warrant.
Do you have that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I would also like to have a motion to... This is about to raise a dollar to plow the private road. I'd like to have a motion to put that on the annual town meeting.
Do that motion.
Second.
I just... I cancelled it just to keep them in order. If you change them, it doesn't mean anything, it's just for organization purposes and reference, so 11. See at the top one?
Yes, I can see that. All right. All right, and the next one to put on is to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to lease certain real estate and improvements thereon, commonly known as 18 Common Street, Brookfield, for such period of years upon such terms and conditions that the board of selectmen self-determine to be appropriate and to further to visit and appropriate transfer available funds or borrow the sum of $16,500 for the rent for the initial year of the said lease for the library building maintenance account and to further to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into an option to purchase said property and to further authorize the board of selectmen to execute any and all documents to carry out the intent of this article and take any action relative to it.
Motion to place. Oh, no, it's already placed, so we're good.
Well, yeah, I know...
Very good.
So do we want a...
Motion, place?
No, it's not place, it's to...
Put it on the warrant.
Okay, I thought everything that we were reviewing was already in essence on the warrant, 'cause it kept it in.
It is.
It is, but we want to... No, not everything, no. We have to vote on each one of these and decide whether or not we're gonna put them on the warrant.
Great, I'll second that.
Yep.
Any discussion on them?
No.
Well, I know that there were... I saw some emails back and forth, there were a few problems with the leasing agreement. And Kate Klein from K&amp;P Law, she has straightened them all out.
Yep.
And that's what's on there.
Right, so could you go?
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, this is 12, this is another one. All right, let's see.
That's because of the municipal modernization act, that's one that town council wrote up, 'cause I guess we have to do it in order to comply. It's, as you see, the statutory changes, statutory changes made under that family law.
So it says place.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that the...
So I'll make the motion to place this.
All right, so the tax title thing at the bottom is someplace else? The sec... It says second article?
Yeah, we probably need to do both of those, Carrie. Did you see the second one?
Yeah, you're right, you're right. So that's... So what's gonna happen is, we number that 13, we're gonna have to renumber everything else.
What's the... What's the last one?
13, one.
And we don't...
Let's call it 52, let's call it 52 then.
52.
Last one is 51.
Well, that's just... Okay, yeah.
Okay, so this will be 13...
Well, why don't we go ahead and renumber as we go, actually, in case there's something we don't place?
So this will be 12, and this will be 13.
13, yeah.
13, okay.
We'll just renumber.
Because we also have to add numbers to the ones that you just put on today.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to add...
Thank you for picking up on us.
Article 12 and Article 13 to the warrant.
Do you have that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll change this one to 14.
For 13's gonna be 14.
14, okay. This is to see if the town will seek to purchase 4.36 acre lot plus or minus located at 14 Kimball Street for a sum not to exceed $35,000.
Right, this is the conclusion of the discussion with the Bennett sisters, that what we were trying to do is to get some other land, and so the town would be in possession of land on... Good. Melasus Hill, as well as 14 Kimball, and my commitment to them was that I would at least bring it forward as to whether or not the town wishes to purchase the 14 Kimball Street. And if they don't, they don't, if they do, they do, but I would...
I'll make a motion at this time?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I don't believe it.
I think we're gonna have to get up more when we do have it on. I think Al will have to get some more research on it, 'cause it has to have different things worded in there on the property.
Do you want me to work with Al to put together information sheet about what that whole deal is for people at town meetings, so that they can understand it better?
I think it's going nowhere. I mean, that's my personal feeling, because what I was trying to convince them to do is to donate a portion of property and pay them for a portion of property, and that's not the deal. It's... They want $35,000 for it.
Yes, 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 okay.
So it's like, that's not what I thought we could do, so I...
Would the woodlot still be part of that?
No, it's not part of it. They're looking to give that to wildlife, or be paid for it from wildlife.
Oh, okay. All right, then, next one is number 15, it's to accept a job description for a grant writer, facilitate a job description. This is just a draft of it.
Yep.
And I'd like to make a motion to put this on.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one will be 16.
Yeah.
This is to vote to amend Chapter 15 of the Personnel Bylaws, Section 2, mandatory classification to include the position of principal assessor. The reason is with the permanent assessor of a working board of assessors, the position assistant assessor no longer exists. The new designation more accurately reflects full-time department head title position in the assessor's office.
Yep.
And this article would not result in any change of any hour or wages.
Right. You have a motion to place?
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's 16. Now, we're moving on to 17. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money to support the Commonwealth of Massachusetts mandated software conversion to be completed by the assessing department. And this was sponsored by the assessing.
Motion to place.
Second that. Just a quick discussion, is there a reason why they didn't just do a line item in the operating budget that was separate for the conversion and chose to do a warrant article instead?
Yeah, Al talked to me about it. Okay. Yeah, he mentioned it, and he was there one day.
Because you could do it either way, so it's fine.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's 17. Now, this is gonna be changed, this will be 18.
All right. This one is... And I changed that part for an assessor.
Oh, this is for the... This is for the... Okay, this is for the solar pilot, the article, town council wrote that up to us.
Yep.
And she put them both into the one article.
Yeah.
Motion to place then?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion before we do it? All in favor?
Aye.
This is now going for 19. See if the town will vote to raise a sum of $25,000 for the installation of the upgrade snow cleats guards above the entranceway at the town hall or take any action related to that, too. This is the sponsor, is William Simpson, for the Town Hall Improvement Committee.
Right.
He said the quote is, "For a partial snow cleat and ice break system for critical areas of the town hall above areas where snow and ice fall has been a potential hazard."
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rose 19, this is 20. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate or transfer a sum of money of $60,000 to purchase the installation of platform lift for the access to the second floor.
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One thing I would recommend is just to change the wording to, from $60,000 to a sum of money, and then have the motion be...
Yes.
Because originally, I think the estimate was closer to 65, and I just want to make sure we vet the numbers.
Okay, all right, we just put sum of money.
Yeah.
All right, so Cindy wants all of these placed.
Well, they're all gonna... Listen, they were always all gonna be placed, I believe, it's just that when you asked her just for your own...
Yeah, but what was more important?
To prioritize the list, that's what she did. If she decides to pass all of them, that's fine, but as of now, I think you should put them all on, because you're not, you're not taking the priority.
The first... The first one is already on for Article 10.
Yeah, that's right, so...
Yeah, so...
We put that on for her anyway, so let's re knock everything, let's take that off.
So this will go back to...
So guess what, we're back to where we were? You know, thank you, Miss Eagle Eye.
Okay. All right, that's already on. Okay, then this one, this one, the next one, she says, "This is very most important, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $46,000 to fund the road construction and reconstruction account." Do I have a motion for that?
You have a motion, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is...
Can we... I know we've already voted it, and I do support it, but would everybody be okay if I have a discussion with Herb about what is in the plan, since it's greater than the amount that he originally gave to the capital improvement planning committee, to see what projects are driving that additional amount, and then just to validate within the five-year plan for that?
Yeah, there was a list.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was something. I can't remember the list.
So it was 35 before?
Yeah, it was 35.
It was, and there's probably a perfectly legitimate reason, but I just want to make sure that we understand it, and then that way I can also share it with the capital improvement committee.
Sam, Brooke.
Oh, okay.
I think, yes. But confirm that.
Okay, now she has passed over here, does she want us to put this one on?
Again, these is... This is what she submitted before April 30th, but then when you asked her for your own use to prioritize the list, that's how she prioritized it. But basically, I would say, put it all on.
Okay, we'll put it on.
If you want to pass over, we can, or whatever, I just don't want it.
This will be 23.
The money's there.
23, she would like, this is to appropriate the sum of $7,500 for central line painting of the town road.
We're absolutely gonna do that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think what it was is, when you thought maybe the financials wouldn't be done or might not be done, and that's where our placement...
Okay, so, like a motion?
If it's there, social plan.
You have a motion, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and this is another one, to transfer $2,750 from the general fund to the fleet repair and replacement account. And this was money that was obtained from the sale of the 1980 Mack Trump.
Sounds like we should do it. Motion.
Motion?
Do you have that motion?
Do you have a...
I'll second it for discussion. I just want to make certain we check with the town accountant, because I think transferring from the general fund is a bit of a misnomer.
Yeah, it's really not the general fund.
Because in essence, those funds that we got that year will come back in free cash, so in essence, we would either be transferring it from the prior year's free cash, or if there was some residual from some other account that could be accounted for that way.
She's got four of them around here from the general fund.
So I would just like some input from Carrie before we formalize the language about what the appropriate verbiage would be and how we would do that.
Do you want... I'll check with Carrie, since it'll be in the articles, so I'll check with her.
Okay, Carrie, I'll check with her, okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, so do we want... We'll put this one on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, conceptually, I support it, but I don't... I think the verbiage is gonna be problematic, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the next one is to, same thing, it's $18,724.72. They would like to put that into the fleet repair and replacement account, and this was a reimbursement from the FEMA Blizzard back in 2015.
Right.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now, this is another one, the same thing, $4,900 to go to the fleet repair replacement account. This was for receiving the sale of the 97 Ford.
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is to see if we will... This is to purchase a generator for the sum of... I don't remember, we want to put the sum in there in case it differs?
Again, we would want to raise appropriate sum of money.
Yeah, sum of money.
That's how we usually write them anyway, we put the sum in the information.
A sum of money.
Make it on this change out.
A sum of money. To purchase a generator for the highway garage. Do I have a second on that?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and this is another one, to transfer into the fleet repair replacement, it's $326.78, and this was received from scrap metal.
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Here's some more from the highway. Okay, so another one to put money... Oh, no, this is to transfer $139.84 from the general fund to the highway expense account or take any... Now, this should be... I wonder if this is one that should be on special?
I don't know what you think, Linda.
Is this something that is like a cleanup that she wants to do?
I don't know, but I know she's pretty knowledgeable, it's in the special one, annual, she stuck it on the annual, but...
But a lot of times, though, I don't know, see if it...
I'll find out.
Motion to place, and then...
We'll place it, we have to pass over.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this is another one, to transfer $3,700 into the fleet repair account, this was for the sale of the 1977 Mack.
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, who would be the authority on whether it should go on annual or special? Would that be Carrie, or would that be Mike?
Not Mike, no, Mike hasn't had it.
That would be Carrie.
Yeah.
And that's an odd one?
It is, because usually this is... Yeah, why would they want to do this?
Because that money is going to... Yeah.
I think this would be...
I honestly question placing that one at all, I'd almost like to revisit that vote.
I'm... I think we should talk to her about whether this should go onto the special.
Leave it in. You can all go over it next week.
Leave it in, ask the question, we'll do it next week.
Okay. Okay, now we're down to number 30, and this is another one. Oh, this is to transfer $2,930 to the road reconstruction account. This is a reimbursement from the Division of Ethical Restoration for surveying of the Rice Connor Road culvert.
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The good news is all this money's coming into the croppers. This is great.
This is good, okay, this is to see if the town will pursue into Mass General Law, Chapter 82A, Section 2, vote to designate the highway department as the town's office to issue permits for the purpose of creating a trench, as that term is defined by Mass General Law, C-82A, Section 4, and 520... What's that, 40? She said the circle.
It's about the... Yeah, it's CMR 14.
Oh, CMR 14, and she said this is important, that this go on.
Right, because this is OSHA stuff.
OSHA stuff, okay.
Yeah, and managing it, so that they... It's clear. Yes, you have a motion to place.
I'll second that.
Can we have a discussion? Could you...
Yeah, and what it does is, so that there's no confusion if someone is digging a trench, that they have to get it signed off by the highway department to make sure that it's safe.
Is highway department, in essence, the correct department versus like the building inspector?
I would say trenches, it would be highway.
Highway, okay.
All in favor for placing this on?
Aye.
Okay. This is 2, from the cemetery. To see if we will borrow a sum of money to repay three-year-olds at the Brookfield Cemetery. He's got a... We can put in the sum, but he says it's gonna cost $25,000 to do it. And then 33, he to borrow also to pour a concrete pad at the Brookfield Transfer Station, which will cost... Oh, I'm sorry.
To one's Board of Health.
Yeah, this is from the cemetery, so do we want to take a vote to place this?
Motion to place, yep.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, this is from the Board of Health, it's a sum of money to pour a concrete pad at the Brookfield Transfer Station.
Motion to pa... Oh, for the place.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's gonna be $10,600. Okay, this is one from the police chief, Mike Blanchard. He would like to have $46,000 for the purchase of a new cruiser, and this would increase the fleet to four vehicles, providing less...
Wear and tear.
Wear and tear on vehicles and providing longer life for the cruisers. Now, is this something that we could probably... Because we haven't trans... Put the new name on the fleet repair recon, so that could be something that we could take, that $89,000?
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's where it would come from.
And if I looked at capital improvement, they've agreed to a vehicle.
So the original capital plan was to do a cruiser this year, so...
Okay.
So motion to place.
Motion to place it on?
I'll second.
All... I mean, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, now, this is another one from the chief. $19,000 will probably would be a sum of money to the police department for the purchase of cruiser radios, three portable radios. This was asked for at the June 27 annual town meeting, was passed over. It needs to be a state mandated replacement of the radio system. I'd like a motion to place this on?
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is another... Okay, it's another citizen's petition here, and this is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to place a sidewalk at the start of Lake Road to White's Landing on the north side of the road.
Motion to place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is another one, we have a citizen's petition. Okay, to see if the town will aggressively enforce the littering and trash disposal laws by ticketing as prescribed under Mass General Law for Title 1, Chapter 270, Section 16. This ticket can be criminal or civil. A ticket from the district court is payable within 21 days. So we want... We'll pass this one also?
Yeah.
I'll vote to places.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have articles, this is... Okay, now, this is from the request from the Planning Capital Improvement Planning Committee, to see if the town will approve the capital improvement plan for FY 19 through FY 24, with the provision that individual capital items included in the plan should be submitted by the appropriate department head and committee for town meeting approval or... So do we want to make a motion to put this on?
There are none, but it's to pass over, 'cause that's what we talked about earlier.
Okay, so do we want to even put it on then?
I think so.
We still want to put it on?
Yeah.
And the reason I think we do is that we can communicate that we're in fact doing what we're doing.
Yeah, that we have a draft, but that due to some of the last-minute changes.
And then the other one is to put a sum of money from free cash and stabilization.
Let's renumber that one to... Towards the very end of the annual town meeting. So that one should be like...
52.
Yeah, that one... Yeah, that, that one, just put that on.
Usually it's the last one.
It's either the last one or the second to last one.
All right, so let's, all right, so you want to make that fifty-two? Well, it's going to be even more...
Whatever the last one is.
Whatever the last one is.
How many, how many did you put on? Five, that we, how many did you put?
We put one off. We've put thirty-nine of them on. Thirty-eight of them on so far.
Well, no, plus, plus these other ones.
That's what I'm saying.
So, so let's, do you want to, uh, number these?
Yeah, let's number those.
Okay, so let's make this...
You have my copy, so I just don't want to...
Do you want to make the marijuana one thirty-nine?
Okay, one minute, let me get to them.
Well, no, let's, why don't we do them, really, why don't you just go put them at the tail end of...
I put them at the tail end.
Yeah, you'll put them at the tail end.
Let's save this, this thirty-nine, the very last one. So call it fifty-two, the marijuana one.
Okay. Wait a minute now, we don't have, this one, we're putting it on.
But I tell you, but what, why don't we do those numbers when we get there?
Yeah, when we get there.
Let's get, let's just get, let's procedurally, let's just get through this. Let's understand that...
So do you want to keep this, do you want to keep this thirty-nine, well, do you remember it at the end?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll just put it on at the end, because it usually goes at the end.
Yeah, don't leave, don't leave it.
Let's take thirty-nine off.
Right, exactly.
Thirty-nine is coming, thirty-nine is, this comes...
The number's coming on.
And thirty-nine is going to be this one here that is on...
Currently forty.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine.
The one from the bylaw committee.
See if the town's on.
All right. Recall of town officers.
Oh, and what is the change? Let's see.
We don't currently, we don't currently have any bylaw that...
Yes, we do have a recall.
Applies to that.
A recall, we have a recall. It was a special, I don't think it's in with the bylaws. It was a special petition that happened back in the nineties. They petitioned legislature.
Right, there's, yeah, you have to, the way it is, because we don't have a bylaw, we would have to petition the legislature for any type of recall by adopting a local rule.
But we do have one, Jeff. We have a recall. Yes, we do in the community, because we had recall in Washington.
It's not in our current actual bylaws. It's, it, there's a procedure that's allowed under Mass General Law.
It's, uh, we have it, because we've used it.
Do you want to look real quick?
Yeah, you want to look real quick? Because I remember they had, it was, it was, it was back in the nineties, no, I'm sorry, it was back in the eighties. They had to petition the, um, the legislature to do it.
Right, because if you don't have a local bylaw, then you, then you can petition the legislature to do a special. What Mr. Cook is, and the bylaw committee is, is proposing is that we adopt a local law so that a petition to the state is not required.
For what? For petitioning?
So, so we would not have to petition the state legislature.
Oh, we don't have to petition them, because we, we've used it. We already have it in place.
Okay, so it needs to...
We could have, what, what is his change? He's got here, let's see, do you want to change the whole thing around? Uh, right here, it says here right on the bottom, nineteen eighty-four home rule legislature adopted by the general court and ratified by Brookfield voters at a town meeting in nineteen eighty-four on the nineteen eighty-four ballot. It was under Mass General Laws, Chapter ninety-nine, it's got it right here on the bottom.
So what is he adding?
So, but we never adopted it as a bylaw. It was ratified at town meeting, and we...
In an election.
In an election.
So it is, we do have it in place.
But it's not printed in the bylaw, so this is printing it in the bylaw.
No, okay, well, let me see what the difference is. I think before we, I mean, we can place it, but I think we have to look at the one that we already have to see what he has changed for wording in this.
So refer it to council?
No, so we, uh... We can get, we can get it out ourselves. We can get it from Mike.
All right.
Because it's in the file.
All right.
And see what the change is.
So a motion to place and research, research tonight.
Research it. Get it out and I can go over and see what the difference is.
How should you get it?
Well, Mike, well, Mike's not going to be, will Lanny be in for him?
Oh, Lonnie, yeah, Lonnie.
Yeah, so this, it's a whole, it's a whole folder on this.
Okay.
So he can have Lonnie pull it.
And then I can get the job by phone, so should she be calling?
And I'll review it and see what the difference is.
Okay.
Okay, now this is another one. To adopt a chapter two, Section twenty-two of the town bylaws as reads as followed. It's, prior to setting the tax rate, the town must hold a town meeting for the citizens to consider an article on the amount of free cash to be used. We already...
Can I make a suggestion procedurally and for the sake of the town meeting? Um, I know we were numbering as we went, but I'd recommend that we put the money articles up front.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because, because we've got all of these and we're starting to number them in there, and people are going to be exhausted.
And, and again, that's what I said, this was just to organize it as they came in. So what we'll do is we usually do try to put the light ones together.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that'll happen, just as long as we get down to half what we're going to have, then I'll be...
We always, he wants this to be made a bylaw?
Yes.
Do we want to put this on? So I, I, because we already have something on, we, we put it on every year, but he thinks that we should have a, a special town meeting. Is this what he's calling for, the way I'm reading it?
This is what I'm reading.
That he wants a, another town meeting before the tax rate, to put the free cash on, to reduce the tax rate, not have it on the annual. So we want to put this one on?
How much is it cost to hold a town meeting now?
Well, you have to, you have to have a voter registration session to, that goes on all day. Have to pay your registration people.
I think we should refer it to Al. Put, replace it, but we refer it to Al for calling.
But I have a motion?
Yeah, you have a motion to place with recommendation from the assessor's office.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is another one.
This seems to be a duplicate of the other recall.
To see, to see if the town will vote to have it.
Amen.
And, oh, we'll petition by the state. Oh, what he wants to do is, it's twenty, you need twenty percent of vote of the registered voters to pass. So he wants to have it down to ten. Ten percent.
So it's two separate items. One is to, to formally adopt it as a bylaw, and the second one is to lower the threshold.
Yeah, he wants to lower it to ten, ten percent. Well, I know when they had it once before, when we had this, they didn't have any problem with the twenty percent of registered voting.
It's, motion to place.
Second.
And then we'll have the debate.
All right, that's twenty-one.
But we should put the two of them together.
Yeah, these two should go together. I think there's the other one.
Well, they will, and they leave it like this for now, and then I'll put it together.
Yep.
Okay, we want to, we're going to vote, do I have a second on that?
Yeah, you have a second. We said pass.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is another one. A new bylaw, which should be from Section twenty of Chapter two, if adopted, read, gain new fee for town services. This is, this is by, you have to do this anyway, and it's under Mass General Law, so I don't know why he wants to do it.
Well, no, that's not necessarily...
No, he's saying town meeting.
Yeah, he's saying that town meeting would have to vote it currently.
Yes, we always do that. If you go up on any kind of a fee, it has to be approved at town meeting.
Uh, I don't believe so, not at all. Um, there's been a number of debates about changing fees, so long as it's not something that's...
I remember when I first came on as town clerk, I went up on the fees, and I had an approval at town meeting. And I remember also a few years back, um, the fees that were late for excise tax bills, we had to get that approved at town meeting.
So there's, there's, if we talk about a fee for trash bags, trash bags...
Talking about too?
Yeah, but trash bags' fees have changed. The, the dump sticker fee has actually changed without going to town meeting. I mean, then all kinds of fees have changed without going to town meeting. That's actually, I mean, I, and that's what I'm trying to scan through for right now, is the fact that, I think it may be specifically under the selectmen bylaw, uh, or town officer bylaw from a standpoint of, uh, like, for example, Section three of our bylaw, which is not mentioned in this, which would have to be rescinded, is a selectman shall authorize to appoint a wiring inspector for the town to establish a fee schedule for said, said services. So there, it's the selectmen who set the fees.
But a lot of different fees I know have been accepted at town meeting.
So that may have been, you know, kind of a political move for selectmen who didn't want to take the heat for, for changing any of the fees? Frankly.
I would say that this is not clear enough.
I, I don't think it's clear enough either.
Because we have fees that have moved, and we have fees that are scheduled, and things move. So it needs to be very clear as to what fees.
So why don't we refer this back to the bylaw committee?
So you're not going to place it?
Not going to place it.
So that's the only one you're not going to place.
No. I think they've got, if they want to put, I feel, if they want to put on different ones, I think they should be here to explain them out more, because they're not really giving any explanation on why they want to do this.
No, that one for sure.
Okay, now this is another one.
Well, you know, one thing that we do need to address with regards to... Oh, no, never mind. I was afraid that I'd run across something that would give us a problem on the trench one, but, but it's not. It's for only on park, public property.
This is now another one he wants to put on, to change it so we can have a town meeting on the second Wednesday in June.
So do you want to change this next one to forty? What do you want to do? You want to change the, change, if you're not going to, or I guess you're going to clarify, so we have to keep it as that, in case he clarifies and he decides to put it on.
So do we want to put this one on?
It is so hard. This is...
It is. It's hard to know what night actually to have the town meeting. And if we want to have it on the second Wednesday, because, you know, a lot of times if you don't have all your figures in and everything.
Well, and it's saying Wednesday. We've been traditionally doing Fridays.
And then we've talked about putting it on other nights, and nobody really knows what is the right night to put it on.
As much as I don't like burning a Friday night at a town meeting, it's at least where you don't have to get to work the next day. It encourages participation from people other than those that, that, you know...
We used, I remember years ago, we used to have town, I'd say, a special on a Tuesday evening. And we were lucky if we got the form. I used to go outside and have people come in, because you have to have a form of thirty.
So we place, but we need logic for why it's the Wednesday.
Okay. We need some, so if you want contacting on that one too?
What, what causes Wednesdays?
Yeah, why he wants a Wednesday. He should have been here to explain these, so that we would have better knowledge of these.
Yep.
Okay, now, this is one from the fire department. It's to raise a sum of money for air bottles and protective clothing. And it says these items have a finite lifespan, and they are items that need to be replaced.
No, it's an every year thing.
What is that, number forty-four?
No, you have forty-five.
Forty-five, you have forty-five. Forty-five.
Okay, but it's forty-four.
It's forty-four.
But we want to change them, because remember we were going to put the money articles together?
Right.
And the ones that aren't money articles.
I just want to keep track of where we are, what we have here.
I have forty-five.
I have forty-four.
It says forty-five.
It says forty-five right now.
It says forty-five, but I have...
I would say forty-four, because we kicked back.
Right, yeah, it's forty-four.
Okay, forty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so place forty-four.
Place, motion to place forty-four?
Yep, you have it.
I'll second.
Uh, do you have any discussion on it?
I do, I want to, do, does anybody mind if I reach out to him about why the amount shifted five K from what he covered with the CIPC?
Okay, well, I think the next, add a question to the next one too.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Just is everybody comfortable if I find out why the changes in some of his articles?
Sure, oh, sure.
All right.
No problem.
Right, and so what's capital got for the...
Capital had ten K for the air tanks. I mean, it's, it's phrased as a sum of money, so the fifteen is a reference number.
Yeah.
So I just want to understand what we're asking for and why.
So we're going to place this one on?
Yep, I would, I would support that.
Okay, now this is another one. This is another one too. The, um, replacement, sum of money to purchase or make improvements to fire vehicles. This is also in the fire department. He said the age for replacement is twenty-five years, and Brookfield operates at three vehicles, with engine one is thirty-one years old, engine three is thirty-five, and forest three is thirty-two. And he's got that minimum target. Do you have anything on the capital improvement on this?
So we only had two hundred and fifty on the plan for this, because he was only asking for the first truck. Actually, no, I, I correct myself. Um, there was, one of the, the trucks was on there, and then the brush truck was also on here.
Now, was this one of which list articles are we thinking?
I think perhaps, I, I think it may also be kind of a, an aware, the intent with that text is to raise everybody's awareness that the, that the fire department is not necessarily operating with modern equipment. So the, the first truck, um, I don't know which one the original capital request was to replace, whether it was engine one or engine three. I believe it's engine one, because that one is younger, but it has the unsafe cab on it. It's got the, uh, open, the open cab.
So what's...
And then the brush truck is also mentioned on the, um, on the capital plan, but it was not in this year. It was actually in, I think, the following year.
So what do they have on, what's he, what do the capital improvement have? Is it just one for this year?
They had, they had one, well, they had the, um, larger trucks starting, actually, the, the loam starting next year. But that could have been voted this year, and then the first payment being the following year. So I'm not certain if they expected to place that one or not.
So we'll have to, if you want to...
So we want to place...
We'll place it.
And we want to match up with what capital improvement recommends.
Yeah.
Right. So they were recommending twenty thousand a year, but they were recommending it start in FY twenty?
So were they, so they actually not approving that we put it on this line?
I don't think they were expecting it to go on this year, but they did have the, and they have the brush truck on for next year as well.
We could always, you know, vote to place it, and then we could always put it...
I think what we do is we place it, because I think the need is there, and it was on the last, um, it was on the last one. I think...
I don't know if, if this, if all three of them were on the last.
No, but one was. One, one fire truck was.
We'll talk to the capital improvement and see what they want to do, then, then we can always, you know, reword it that way. Or we will want to talk...
Do you place it or not?
Yeah, we'll place it.
Okay, again, I'm making this forty-five. I want to make sure we're all in tune with this, okay? So we don't end up like an automaton.
This is forty-five.
Right.
All right, and then forty-six is going to be the nine thousand, four hundred.
Okay, now this is another one from the fire department. To purchase thermal imagins. I thought we, from the fire department, didn't we purchase some of those already?
No.
No?
No, it was on the last one, and we defer it to this year.
So we should place...
We should place this. Uh, motion to place?
Motion to place. You have it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See if the town, this is another one from the fire department. Uh, to borrow for fire station repairs. He said the electrical system needs significant work. This was put off from the twenty-seventeen Annual Town Meeting. Didn't he have some work done over there by the, by the school?
I don't know.
Or was that when they put the roof on? We could probably, we could probably place it and discuss it, maybe have ten thousand come down.
Right, because he, he put twice as much as what he had on the last time.
Okay, vote to place this?
Yep.
Not motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you going to ask him, like, do you want to ask him?
I'm going to ask him about all of this.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, forty-eight.
Okay, forty-eight. This is to purchase a machine to want to fire fight its protective clothing. That seems quite a bit. Do you want to talk to him about this too?
Yeah, I'd say we place it and get some additional...
We'll get some more information on it. Do I have a... We'll place it, we'll get some more information on it. Do I have a motion to place it?
You have a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Forty-nine. These are from Donna, that she does every year.
Okay, this is the one that, yeah, Donna does these every year, so, motion to place forty-nine?
Place.
All in favor?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And the same thing as, like, fifty?
Yep.
Second.
Motion to place.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, this is another one. We have, we have the top part of it all done up, but he would like, the by law committee would like to add the last paragraph to it.
I don't know what, I'm lost.
I don't know.
Annual town on?
Yeah, we've run out.
Oh. Oh, okay, here. The copy, let's see, is it the copy you want here?
I don't know, where did that come from? What is that?
Oh, that's the same one as the towing one.
The towing one?
Oh.
Is that an extra one?
Yeah, it's an extra copy of it.
I don't know, my packet's missing. I don't know, so it's probably flying around here somewhere. I'm going to go by yours, Linda.
Okay. Okay, so now, now we have-
All right, so now you have the number, and the ones that you've, that you've voted.
So this is just fifty, so this will be fifty-one.
What, tell me what's fifty-one, because I lost my packet, and I have to know what you did.
I just handed that to you.
No, yeah, she gave me one paper, my whole packet of the ones that you placed.
Okay.
It's here somewhere, but just tell me how.
But this is the same one that I just passed over to you.
Okay, so it's going to be fifty-one.
Fifty-one. You don't have it? All right, that's the part everyone-
You have the, it's in this file.
Yeah, it's in the pile. This is, we already have, what the by law committee wants to do is, we already have a, in effect, price-
Yes, that's right, oh, he's changing it, that's it.
From November fifth to the first, that we can't, from the hours of eleven to six, that we can't be parking out in the winter months out on the street. And he wants to add, any vehicle parked in a violation of this by law interfering with removal of snow and ice may be relocated to another location at the order of the chief of police. The police shall make at least one attempt to contact the owner before removing said vehicle, and the cost of vehicle removed and storage checked, the finish shall be paid by the vehicle owners or owners to the persons or company that performed the removal, blah, blah. Well, I already talked to chief of house this the other day, and he doesn't act, he doesn't approve.
Oh, okay.
Right, Karen?
Yeah, is this the same one that we just want, that we just, that you're just okay with just changing it? That's an updated version, is that what that is?
No, we talked, we had talked about putting this on. And he, he says-
What was his concern about it?
He wants to add, the vehicle shall be towed, they shouldn't be left out in the street.
And Mike says no.
And Mike says, he says, this is, he says, this is a big city. He says, it's a small community. And he says, there's still plenty of room on the roads, you know, for the plows to get by. And because they just get ticketed anyway. It's a twenty-five dollar ticket.
Mike doesn't go for it.
No, he didn't go for it. Remember Karen, he was talking, he came in to talk to us about the other day.
Then I would refer it to the by law committee?
Maybe?
And they have to refer it to the police chief. They need to be one of one voice.
Yeah. Okay, so you're not going to put that one on?
So you're not going to put that on?
So this, the next one will be?
Well, if you could refer Karen to, back to by law to be-
Yeah, we're going to have him talk to Mike in there.
Okay, fifty-one. This is another citizen's petition to put on.
I'd also like, I'd also be interested in hearing from parking hearing officer about, how he feels about it. Do you?
That's, that's Mike.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was Mike Blanchard. I thought it was Mike Blanchard.
No, 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 Mike Siri, he's the hearing officer.
Mike Blanchard was against it, though, too.
Mike Siri, I don't know if Mike Siri was, it was Mike Blanchard that was against it.
So, yeah, refer to Mike Blanchard.
I don't even know if, if Mike has had even many hearings. We could ask Mike, what I don't think, because I used to run the hearings when I was town clerk. No, but there really weren't too many people that objected to these tickets, because they knew they were wrong.
Mike just had a bad, Mike Blanchard had a one bad guy through this last one, that he basically ignored what was going on.
Like we said, for an example, when we talked the other day, like, if people are still parked out here on Central Street, there's still plenty of room for the plow trucks to get to. And he said even on the sidewalks. The next one is another citizen's petition.
Yeah, we agree, yeah.
This is to, we'd like to put, place lights on the area of the Murray Memorial Bridge from Mill Road. Mill Road?
Mill Street.
Mill Street, oh, call it Mill Road, to Town Farm Road at the entrance of Wagon Wheel and the intersection of Rice Corner and Rice Corner Cross, and at the intersection of Gay Road and Rice Corner Road, or take any action. And that's another one that was put in by, Mr. Cook was the originator of this one off, and we have to put it on.
Yep.
Motion to put it on?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Here, we'll see, this must be yours.
Oh, okay. Oh, parking, all right.
All right, so I'm going to have the, I'm going to just number yours, and I'm going to, I should have those.
This is fifty, this is fifty-one. Okay.
All right, fifty-one is the petition.
Okay, and we already?
I have fifty-two as, I have fifty-one as the, as this one that you didn't put on.
Now, this is the one, didn't we already go over this one?
So I think we originally voted to put it on.
Yes.
Okay, but we want to refer it back to you, right?
Okay, but I want to make sure you have number fifty-one.
We just discussed this one, we reopened it.
Yeah, those are the-
Those are the ones that we reopened to put on.
And we just, those just get numbers now.
Okay, these will just get numbers now. So this one will be fifty-two.
Okay.
This is to change, I don't know what you want to do here, with the height, it's something to do with the driveway cuts, Cindy already said we didn't need it, but we'll put it on.
Yep, put it on, and have Cindy say.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. That's fifty-two.
Linda, can I talk to you for a second? My numbers are off, because I have fifty, fifty-one is the one you decided not to place, we're going to refer it back to by law committee. That's the one that's the, the towing, okay, which would make fifty-two the petition. Fifty-two is the petition for lights, correct?
No, I have that fifty-one.
Well, then let's go back. What do you have with fifty? What do you have? You hasn't matched up with me, will you?
Well, I, I quit number.
I have fifty-one.
Because if we're going to move them, my attitude was, so long as we know which ones, so long as we know which ones we're voting on, it doesn't matter.
Yes, I have fifty for Donna for wages, correct?
No, this is the, yeah, this is the wage.
Okay, so fifty-one is going to be the one with the plow that you didn't put on, correct?
No, this is, no, no, fifty-one is going to be-
The petition?
The petition for the lights. That's fifty.
All right, I have fifty-two, I have, okay.
And I was going, we were going to call, fifty-two would be the one that Cindy says is already there, so are we going to put this on? Do we decide?
Yeah, we said that we were going to put it on, and then Cindy was going to explain why it should be passed over.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we don't miss any of that, that's why.
And then we already voted to put the one for the marijuana on?
Yep.
And that is fifty-three.
And solar's fifty-four.
And this will be fifty-four. This is on the solar. We're going to put that one on. Okay, now, we're, didn't we have, we're going to wait now?
Yes, we're going to, this one, you want to put the last one on, this one at the very bottom, transfer the sum of money from free cash.
Yeah, so this would be fifty-five. Do we want to place it, put this one on to have a sum of money from free cash to the destabilization?
Absolutely.
And then the, this, and the one that I would probably add, though we don't have the warrant open currently technically, is also to do one that's from free cash to, um-
Replace from last year. We need that one, too.
I'm sorry?
We need one to replace, remember the money we took out of-
Well, if we're transferring free cash to stabilization, then we can do that by, by trying to set a threshold, once we have our numbers of a minimum, I think, the number I saw was a hundred and sixteen or a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
That we spent last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't want to have, we don't want to have a special one to put that, to put that money in, because you never know, people might not want to agree to put money into stabilization.
Well, they might not, but I think that that's part of the discussion on the floor, that whatever amount that we're recommending go back in is related to-
We have to put that back in.
To refracking it, and to, and to the goals, in essence, that we're going to be providing from a standpoint of level stabilization. The other one I was going to say is that, is that part of the, part of the drive, I think, for the, for the tax rate by law has to do with the fact that we haven't, in recent years, at least put an article on to apply some of the free cash to lower the tax rate. Now, honestly, doing that is not necessarily good fiscal practice, especially given the deferring that we've done on capital improvement, and the fact that our stabilization is below goal if we're going to go out to the bond market. So I'd say that for this year, I would only have the one going from free cash to stabilization.
Because I know the one that we usually, well, I've never seen it actually pass, you know, so much money to lower the tax rate.
Right.
I don't, I don't remember it being passed at the town meeting. But he wants to have a special town meeting to talk to the residents. Do we put that on? Remember?
I think we did. We didn't actually kick that one back.
No.
We kicked the one back.
We took, yeah, we kicked that one.
Yeah, the ones that you kicked back was the by law changing, change, no parking, adding any vehicle parked, maybe relocated, the parking one, and then you also did the, any new fee for town services might be, must be approved by majority vote, and you didn't place that one.
All right, well, I would like a motion to place this on the town meeting one.
Yeah, a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So this is it, so we're all set. And we'll just get some clar, yeah, we'll just get some clarification on some of these articles, and then we're going to get together with the advisory board on it and decide, you know, we're, you know, different minds if we're going to appropriate it, or what we're going to do. All right.
I know this has been a painfully long meeting already, but I did have a couple things I wanted to bring up real quick.
Exactly, because I had, I had a, one here I talked to Herb about.
Okay, come on.
Okay, then we put into other, he wants us to take a vote that we, that the highway department will demolish the three buildings on Kimball Street, North Brookfield Road, and South Maple. And he said he would do them, and he said the first one that he would do would be South Maple, because he says more things are showing up in there.
Yeah.
And he says, when you, they cleaned up the campground, you, you somebody in wear?
Yep.
And they were eight hundred dollars a dumpster, so he would probably get in touch with him again. He said he would demolish them, and he said that would be the first one he'd start with. So he just wanted to vote by us to give him permission to do it.
You got my vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you told Herb he has the permission to do it?
Yes, I will.
Okay, and, okay. All right, do you have, what did you want to bring up?
Just real quick, I wanted to briefly revisit the one private way street light, because I had not realized that the placement of that street light was up on Draper Road, which is also a bus route.
We talked to her about that this morning.
Oh, did you?
And so I guess we're probably going to decide to leave them on.
Yeah, I did the math on it. I think we're only paying like ten, fifteen dollars a month for that, for that particular one, because it's a lower voltage one.
He said the one that had suggested that, what's his name?
It was Clarence, what happened is-
No, oh, it was, no, I thought it was the guy from-
Oh, no, I meant, no, what happened is, it was Kevin Schon, who suggested the survey be taken, and then when we got the emails, I sent it to you, Clarence, and you suggested we write a letter expressing our intent to remove them for the, to the homeowners, and then when we did, we got these two complaints, and then basically everyone said, well, we might as well keep them.
Yeah, especially if it's a fairly high traffic.
And we were, yeah, we were talking to Herb about it when he was in two today. He says, why not leave them on? Because he says it's not a big expense to run.
No, I, and I think that that's, the question was, what should we do? We've studied it. What we should do is leave it.
Yeah, my decision.
Yeah, and that was good. It's a good decision.
Okay.
So that's what we decided this morning.
I was just wondering, is the, did the posting, because I know Karen, in a, in a conversation directly with you, you'd said that you're waiting on guidance for a deadline for posting for the treasurer position. Did one get the term?
Oh, everything's in, yes, it's all, it's all in, and it's all, it's all been posted, it's on, and we'll tell you what's, it's in the telegram, because that, and they have, it's not monster anymore. I forgot the name of what they have, one of those popular-
Probably career builders.
Yeah, something like that. Goes with that, and then we all, and it's also going to be in the Sunday paper.
What's the deadline for the applicants?
It is June fourth is the deadline.
And we've already got a few.
And we have seven, the seven papers from Stonebridge Press, and we have it on MNA, which is a good one. And we also have it in another municipal website, which Brenda did for me, so.
Can you forward the resumes as they come in, so that we have time?
We only really have two resumes so far, and we have one assistant treasurer in Shrewsbury that sent us an email in the wiring about it.
And we had a fellow from Florida.
Yeah.
Would you like to read this one?
Yeah, I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah, if you'd like, just send it to her.
And I promise this is the last one. I've been nominally working with Karen on the cooling dam stuff. I didn't know, does anybody else have any real passion around trying to start to work that, the punch list that came from the engineering company?
I had a conversation, what happened is the guy from, I think I sent everything to you from Time Bond. Bottom line is, it's going to be outrageously expensive to be able to even get it down to, from-
Port Affair.
Yeah, to Port Affair. If you want to fix the whole thing, it's going to be about a million dollars.
Right, but, but we've got to get the inspection done.
Right, they, they offered you the inspection for four thousand dollars, well, then I was going to talk to Karen to find out where we can get that money from. And basically what they're saying is they're recommending, we just remove the dam, because they said it's the same, basically the same price as getting it to fair condition. Even fair condition isn't going to do us much good for the future. So his recommendation is that we remove it. So I think we're going to pursue that, I guess. I haven't really ran by you guys too much. I just got the information earlier in the week.
I think the primary thing would be, let's, do we want to make a motion to request a transfer from the reserve fund for the four thousand for the construction?
Oh, yeah, I guess we might have to.
I was going to, I was going to, I was going to make a motion, even though we don't have the paperwork in front of us to go ahead and make a motion to move four thousand dollars from the reserve fund, and then we can put that to the advisory committee, so we have the option. And the-
Yeah, where I was headed with it, with the information that we now have related to that, is that we circle back around to the Audubon guys that said that they would write, write the grant for the removal.
Okay.
So that we should circle back to say, you guys promised this, what's the deal?
I know you're straight out. Do you want to send me the contact information?
I don't think I have. You have, yeah.
I'll send it to you from the Audubon contest.
Yeah, if you would do that, that would be great.
Absolutely.
So what will I think about now? Turn it over to them?
No, just circle back around, because they made a commitment. It looks from the engineer's report, and we'll verify that once this inspection is done, that, that is the conclusion.
And what was the deadline on the extension?
We did an extension, I think, I want to say it was May twenty-seventh, which I expressed to Time Bond the urgency of this, and they didn't seem to, more or less as long as, I guess, they know you're working on it.
If we contract them to do the inspection, the state will generally give you a second extension. And especially where snow's on the ground, it's not like they could have inspected it in the middle of winter, anyway, so.
That's good.
So, we need to vote on the four thousand.
Yeah, finish vote, finish that vote.
Make a motion, my motion is to move four thou, or to recommend that we pull four thousand from the reserve fund to fund doing the inspection.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Second piece is that, when I was at the advisory committee meeting, not last week, but the week prior to that, they had a concern because the paperwork that was filled out for the library was on an emergency transfer form, or like an account to account transfer form.
Municipal transfer form, I think, was it?
Right, but there was no from account indicated on it. So they didn't vote it at that time. So I don't know if, if the intent was to pull, and I think we had a discussion around that the intent was to pull that from the reserve fund, but because it wasn't annotated on the form, they didn't vote it. So if we want to vote that as being from, a request from the reserve fund, let's go ahead and vote it, So if we want to vote that as being from, a request from the reserve fund, let's go ahead and vote it, but then, and, and give, uh, the chair purview to sign on our behalf and then ask Brenda to fill out the proper form so that it can go back to advisory. So I'll make a motion that we, um, have Brenda resubmit on a, on a, uh, transfer from reserve fund form and that we authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board and support.
You have the motion.
Second.
Uh, now wasn't, I hope it's not too late because I remember, she said it was kind of an emergency situation that it got done.
I think we just have to do it out of this year's funds.
Oh, I don't have any problem with doing it at all, but I'm just saying I thought she had to have that money.
I don't know, but all I can say is that if we vote it, then they can approve it however it is and then we can get it, we'll get it moving.
Oh, I don't have any problem with it all. So aye in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you want?
Want me to do the first one?
So you put the correspondence on.
So, so we have a letter from Kenneth White, who's the chairperson of the Nipmalk Council of the local Indian Clan. And on behalf of the tribal council, I would like to thank the town of Brookfield for their recent efforts with the archaeological survey in Quabah. We have reviewed the report and are pleased that our knowledge of this area matches that of the results of the survey and that finally the area can be recognized as a significant historical landmark and hopefully be protected for further future damage and desecration. We look to, we look forward to working with you in the future and collaborating together to create a long and short-term plans that are satisfactory to us all. We also are concerned about the existing emergency access road that crossed through the burial sites. And we would like to know about the future plans that are in place for the use and restriction of these roads. We certainly do understand the need for emergency access for certain circumstances, but possibly there are alternatives that will allow respectful boundaries for the burial sites. We would be happy to assist with this planning and set up an appointment for, uh, for a visit with one of your representatives or attend to one of your regularly scheduled town meetings. Thank you very much for your time and attention in this matter and we look forward to speaking with you. So, uh, very nice letter. Uh, what I, what, if, with your permission, I would follow up with Kenneth just to indicate that the idea for, uh, the campground is to wait till, till fall town meeting to ask for additional funds. Uh, the, uh, capital approval has earmarked 15,000 for that request. What that would be is, that would be matching money to state money, so it would be actually somewhere around 30, 30,000 or less to do some work. And one of the things that would be needed is that we have identified, or Al helped me identify some town-owned land that is in proximity, uh, which we may, with the survey, be able to, uh, rewrote the emergency access from the, what we're, what, what is staked out today to something different. So not to belabor this thing for tonight. I think we will continue to work with them and go from there.
Okay, now we come to the public access. Do we have anybody with public access to see?
You know I'd be up there with it. We'll come here, uh, put public access at the end of the agenda. That's my first question.
We just decided to try something different.
Well, what's the reason behind it? Did I get you all worked up if there being another meetings?
It's quarter to nine.
It's quarter to nine.
Right, so my, my question is, why do you put it at the end of the meeting?
We tried, decided to try something different, that's all. So that we could get into our regular meeting and get it done.
Which we did.
Yes, and that's what we did. We got right into the meeting.
Okay, not an answer again. Um, I want to get something straight here with my integrity. You challenged my integrity here on April, the, April the 3rd. You told me that I, um, told you three that I accused you of criminal activity in the town. Do you remember that Clarence?
You accused the town employees of criminal activity?
No, you said at the meeting that I accused you three. That's what you said. That was on April 30th. But April 3rd, you said that I accused you three of criminal activity in town, which I did not. And I also told you to watch the tape. And April 30th, you said it again. You said that I accused you of-
You accused town employees of criminal activity.
No, I, you, no, that's not what you said.
I said it not twice. I'm not going to say it the third time.
You don't have to. That, that's on tape too. You accused, you said that you three said that I accused you of criminal activity. It's on tape Clarence. Can't lie about it. Now, Linda, you said that you watched me on YouTube uh, back on April 30th, and it wasn't even posted on YouTube until six days later. So how could you have watched what I said on YouTube?
I don't-
And you were very adamant about accusing me of accusing you three of saying that I said that you guys were conducting criminal activity. It's all on tape. So I don't appreciate it. I think you three owe me an apology is what I think. Especially you Clarence. Cause you, you-
You may get that.
Well, I know, because, yeah, that's just that type of guy that you are. So, anyway, that's clear. It's all on the tape and you can't just keep lying. It's on the tape.
You accused, I will now say for the third time and the last time.
Yeah.
You accused the town employees of criminal activity.
Okay, that's not what was said. You know what I said. If you watched the tape, you'll see what you said. Watch the tape. April 3rd and April 30th. Now, my next question here is, I want to know why our fire chief is allowed to live in that fire station over there for the last three months. Did you guys take a vote to give him permission to live there?
I already answered that question David, I'm not going to answer it.
Uh, I think the townspeople need to know. Why is he living in our fire station?
He's not.
He's not living in our fire station.
He is living there. Okay, he's, he's residing there. He's staying there. He's hanging his hat there, however you want to put it, but he's there.
I explained to you the other day, I had talked to the fire chief.
No, that don't wash Linda. That's not the, the fact is he's living there. I just want to know why, why is he living there?
I had said to you, if you could, if you would get evidence why he, then we would act on it. And you have accomplished any evidence.
It's not my job to get evidence Linda. I'm a citizen. I brought you, I brought you something that was taking place in our town. It's you three to look into it, not me.
I talked to the chief already.
Yeah, oh yeah, and what's that mean? That means nothing.
What we can do is we can adjourn the meeting and I'll walk over and see if anybody's at the fire station.
No, that's, that's, that's just a crap, crap attitude, uh, statement Clarence. So, back again, did you guys take a vote to allow him to live, stay, sleep, whatever you want to call it, in that fire station? Where's he living then? Where's he living?
He's living at his residence on the last-
No, not true. That's rented out to some other folks.
We're crossing over Madam Chairman and, uh, the individual that's being discussed is not present.
He's not present, I know.
Okay, so, alright then.
No, we can't really discuss it.
Okay, we have a public hearing here or we'll go into executive session? What do you want to do?
He is not here.
Okay, so let's, I want, I want you to set me up in an executive session with the fire chief and you three.
No.
Oh, so you don't want to do that either? Oh, so we're just going to, same old, same old again, just not going to make any decisions? This is our problem, the big problem in our town that everybody is saying out there, a lot of people are saying is, you three are the problem. Cause you don't want to act on problems that we have in our town. What gives him the right to live in that firehouse is what I want to know. We can't answer it because you know what's going on and you people have no leadership. None, zero. Not to mention no integrity.
Well, maybe what you should have done is run hard.
No, that's not my place. I brought it to your attention.
No, I wasn't going to say that.
No, okay.
Just end the discussion.
Okay, yeah, of course.
He's got his soapbox, film's on. Go for it David, film's on.
I already, I already made my statements. You already made, you, you're already looking bad Clarence.
Tell him if he didn't think we're capable of maybe making decisions, then maybe he should have ran for selectman this year.
No, 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 but, I know, no, that's, that's not even brought into the conversation. The question is, you three are the selectmen right now. You three are supposed to be making good decisions for our town and you're not.
I feel we have to make very big decisions for the town. Alright, that's it. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
He's got the film, go for it David.
Yeah, you go for it, yeah. You can't keep, can't keep saying not the truth Clarence. It's not going to come true. You can keep saying that. Alright, I got a tree, uh, we're not done with this and we're not done with the town employees not working their hours and getting paid for it. Okay, that's, that's, that is a criminal activity, okay? Eight South Maple Street. I got a town tree. There's a town tree that needs to, that's very dangerous and it needs to be addressed. And it is a town tree.
Now, is this, where, is this on your property?
No, it's not on my property. It's a town tree, Eight South Maple Street.
Eight South Maple Street.
Yeah. And I've had a few people mention it to me and if something happens, they're going to get hurt or the cars will be damaged.
You want me to mention to our facilities?
Yeah, I know you already told us that, that we, uh, have used the last of our tree money for the year.
Oh, that's right, I told you, yeah.
So if it's bad enough, then we may have to look at some sort of transfer, but let's get, let's get a-
Yeah, get a, get a, get an opinion up there. I just want to bring it to your attention so-
Eight South Maple, is that after your property?
No, it's going up the hill on the left. I think it's, it's the second tree. It's the second tree on the left going up.
Going up the hill?
Going up the hill on the left, yes.
That's not South, South Maple?
It's on the, I mean, it's, it's Draper Street, but it's off of South Maple. It's on a corner, I should have said, it's on a corner of South Maple and Draper. So actually it's the second tree going up Draper. That's what I meant to say. But the house, I guess what I'm saying is the houses, the house where the tree is in front of is Eight South Maple. That clarifies it. But it's, it's facing, it's on the corner, so, um, if you could look into that for me. Alright, so I still need, so you're going to give me some answers on these other things too, right? Firehouse, fire chief, employees. And we still have four people working down at the Highway Department. And that's violating our town bylaws. So I want to bring that to your attention as well.
I don't believe it is violating any town bylaws.
It is, yes. Trust me, it is. We didn't, we don't need four. We don't need four.
Oh, there's a difference between your opinion of we don't need four people at the Highway Barn and are we violating a town bylaw?
You are violating, yes, yeah.
Are we coming into the season again where we hire?
Well, you already ran through the winter of, you know, I mean, doing nothing with an extra guy there. So I mean, you might as well just continue on. That's what you're doing. It's violating the bylaw. I just want to know what they're doing for 32 hours per day down there. 32 hours per day. So, do the math. Okay, I will get back to you on these other things and see where you're going on it. Alright, and I'm going to request a, um, executive session as a citizen on a town employee. Then we will address the situation of why our fire chief is living in the firehouse. Alright? And he also put snowflakes in the window because he caught me looking in to see if his fire chief vehicle was there. Two days later, he put snowflakes in the window. So. You can sit there and try to stall on me, have the, have the public access at the end of the meeting, but I'm not going, I'm not going away. And if it continues, I'm going to put three, four big signs on Route 9 in this town. Watch me and you won't be able to stop me Clarence. You and your lies won't work. Good evening, thank you.
I would like to adjourn meeting at eight-
Fifty five. You have a motion to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion on that?
You're welcome.
Aye in favor?
Aye.
Aye.